The Chair calls to order the virtual work session, City of South Fulton, Georgia, Tuesday, October 12, 2021 at 4:00 PM. Roll call, Mr. Clerk, please.
Roll call. The Honorable William Bill Edwards, Mayor.
Yeah.
The Honorable Catherine F. Ryle, District 1. The Honorable Carmelita Gums, District 2.
President.
The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District 3.
President.
The Honorable Naima Gilyard, District 4.
President.
The Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District 5.
Accounted for.
The Honorable Councilmember Khalid, District 6. The Honorable Mark Baker, District 7. And I believe Councilmember Ryle is coming into the meeting. Mr. Mayor, you do have a call.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. First presentation, please.
First presentation is the City of South Fulton wastewater capacity study. This will be presented by David Clark, who serves as the Fulton County Public Works Director. Mr. Clark.
Thank you very much, Mayor. It's good to see everybody, at least virtually. Again, it's been a little while since I've been able to address the city council. Also with me is Rebecca Lindsay. We're going to tag team on this presentation. I know you're under some time constraints today, so we'll keep it moving. Rebecca Lindsay is our senior engineer with Gresham Smith, who helped us with the study itself. Next slide, please. So really, the purpose of the South Fulton capacity study that we completed last year was really to look at the entire South Fulton County area, including the city of South Fulton, to make sure that we are positioning our infrastructure to accommodate the growth that is planned for the South Fulton area and the city of South Fulton in particular. Next slide. Like any study, we followed a fairly, I think, typical process. We met several times with each individual city to talk about their comp plans, their economic development plans, and their long-term growth projections for their areas. From that, we developed future flow projections, which are based on that growth between now, 2020, all the way through 2059. We had an existing computerized model that was last updated in 20, I'm sorry, 2007. So we updated that to relate to current conditions. And then we used those model flows to actually look at what the future needs of the system was going to be. We came up with four separate decades, 2020 through 29, list of projects, 2030 through 39, second list of project, 40 through 49, then 50 through 59. One nice thing that we did about our project, the study, was we wanted to make sure it was flexible. So as areas develop more quickly, we can move things further up into the model, into the plan. And as things develop less quickly, as some anticipated, we can move things back into a later year. And we've put this all into a study that we have now published, and it's actually on our website. If anybody wants a copy, we would certainly work through the clerk and get you a copy. Next slide, please. What we show here is the population and flow projections that we developed working with the City of South Fulton staff for the city of South Fulton. This does not represent the entire South Fulton area that we serve with our wastewater service, but just the city of South Fulton. You can kind of see the city of South Fulton, as you're well aware, are positioning themselves for quite robust growth over the next 30 years. And so these are the numbers that we used and came up with various flows. Right now, the city of South Fulton is generating a little under 9 million gallons a day of wastewater. And then we expect that to increase all the way up to 15 and a half million in 2050. And then there's always a peak flow number that we add because of certain peak events that happen during the year. So we want to make sure that we are sizing the system to handle not only the daily flow but those peak flow events as well. So this just gave you a snapshot of what we used to develop the South Fulton projects. Next slide, please. I think most everybody recognizes that our city actually, our system serves all of the cities with the exception of Hayville in South Fulton. So everything from East Point, College Park, City Fairburn, City of South Fulton, Palmetto, and a small section of Chattahoochee Hills all flow eventually into our Camp Creek facility and is treated there. Next slide, please. What we're showing here is our main system that we do have existing in place. And these are pipes that are sizes 12 inches and larger. Anything that's 12 inches and larger is considered our trunk system that we certainly construct and upgrade as needed. The eight-inch lines that feed the trunk system are traditionally built by developers as part of subdivisions or commercial properties that they extend their system of eight-inch lines to our system of 12-inch lines, and then we take over the maintenance and operation from that point forward. So with that, I would like to introduce Rebecca, and she can talk a little bit more specifically about the planning study that we did. Next slide, please.
Sure, thank you, David. So as David mentioned, we started out with a 2007 hydraulic model, and we updated that. The original model had, did not have all the pump stations. So we updated it to include the 13, 13 existing stations that were in the model plus eight new pump stations, as well as 12-inch in diameter and greater lines that are throughout South Fulton and the force mains and everything that feeds into Camp Creek water reclamation facility essentially. So it excludes any city-owned infrastructure or anything smaller than eight inches in diameter or smaller. So this slide illustrates the engineering criteria that we use in the hydraulic model assessment. We ran hydraulic model scenarios for four simulations, 2020, which is the current day simulation, modeling that decade, 2030, 2040, and 2050. So for each of those scenarios, we were looking for certain engineering criteria to identify what infrastructure needed to be replaced or upsized. And I'll go through this. The pump stations, we looked at the firm pumping capacity, ideally to meet the 2050 max flow and in cases that required a couple of upsizes of a pump station to meet that 2050 demand. Force mains, we wanted to maintain velocity to 10 feet per second. So these are the pipes that are leaving the force mains. Gravity sewers are, they follow topography, they flow downstream. These are the flows that go into pump stations, and we wanted to maintain those at less than 75% full. Within the city of Chattahoochee Hills, it was a little unique because there were some regional pump stations and a new force main extension to provide sewer to that city. And City of South Fulton is also unique because Fulton County maintains the sewers within the city of South Fulton. So this was primarily the extension of gravity sewers with manholes at 400-foot spacing to allow O and M, and this follows topography. And there was also some proposed force main where there was increasing topography, where we had to go up gradient. That's identified in the model according to build-out conditions. Next slide, please, Mr. Adams. Using the numbers that David portrayed earlier that we obtained from the city of South Fulton, as well as all of the other cities that we met with in these individual meetings, we compiled these future flow projections. We show here a line for Fulton Direct customers, and that is largely the city of South Fulton. City of South Fulton is a Fulton Direct customer. The remainder of that balance would be Fulton Industrial Boulevard, some Fairburn warehouses, and some unmetered housing in Union City and a few more small meters. So of that total that you see there on that bottom row for Fulton Direct customers, the city of South Fulton is about 7.5 million gallons in 2020, 8.8 million gallons of the 12 shown in the 2030 decade, about 10.5 million gallons in 2040, and 12.7 of that total in 2050. So again, the city of South Fulton is the primary contributor to that Fulton Direct customers row shown in this table. And these flows were, you know, based on the near-term growth, on actual developments forecasted by South Fulton, and then looking further out based on population projections. Next slide, please. So the next four slides are going to illustrate the results of the modeling, which according to those engineering criteria I presented earlier, identified where there might be bottlenecks in the system, where upgrades or upsizing were needed. You're looking now at the 2020 to 2029 decade, and you'll see these graphically by decade. So the infrastructure in green, once again, is everything existing, and the infrastructure in blue is everything that is to be replaced, upsized, new or, you know, upgraded in the terms of pump stations. So across the whole planning horizon, the study projects a total of over 122,000 feet of gravity pipe and 34,000 feet or more of that is upsizing due to lack of hydraulic capacity. Additionally, there's more than 92,000 feet of force main, three pump station upsizing, and eight new pump stations proposed. So in the 2020 decade that you see here, it's largely new force main and seven new pump stations in Chat Hills. The remainder substantially in the city of South Fulton is over 12,000 linear feet of gravity sewer and then two upsized pump stations. Next slide, please, for 2030. So in 2030, we're showing over 10,000 feet of upsized gravity sewer. You can see that in purple here, over 96,000 feet of new gravity sewer, some new force main extensions, one new pump station, one upsized pump station. Next slide, please. The 2040 decade shows over 10,000 feet again of new gravity sewer, over 14,000 feet of upsized gravity sewer, and six upsized pump stations in that decade. And the final decade slide, please, 2050. So again, here, the, within the city of South Fulton, we extended gravity sewers to reach into areas that were unserved currently. And for the majority of the city of South Fulton, the extensions were serviceable by gravity flow. So those pipes were added into the model as eight inches in diameter initially, and they were simulated with 2050 decade flows. And we iterated from that point, upsizing the pipe until we identified a diameter that would sustain the 2050 diameter flows with that engineering threshold of 75% full. So this final decade represents over 9,000 feet of upsized gravity sewer and two upsized pump stations. Next slide, sir. This is a summary of the dollar values. So we put together conceptual level planning costs for all of the projects that we identified in this study. We broke those out by planning decade. We also broke them out by drainage basin, so the sub-basin that the sewer flows into. These dollar values are escalated according to inflation factor of 5% per year. So the dollar values that you see are in the year that that dollar value would be incurred. Interestingly, the city of South Fulton actually intersects or overlaps all 10 of these drainage basins listed. So the city of South Fulton has improvements in every single one of the drainage basins toned there in the green font. And so you see the grand total for each decade. So this is a 10-year spending horizon of 90 million roughly in the next decade, 137 million in the following, and so on. And as David pointed out earlier, the recommendations of the study are flexible, and they can be adapted to where the growth occurs. And particularly in the cities of Chattahoochee Hill and South Fulton, so whether growth occurs at the anticipated pace or not. And we provided recommendations in the report for Fulton County to conduct targeted flow monitoring, pump station capacity evaluation, and model input data refinement to track the growth in South Fulton as it occurs and make sure that these improvements move into the detailed design phase as they need to occur. With that, David will cover next steps on the next slide.
Thanks, Rebecca. The pay for all this improvements that we have identified, we're probably about 80% done with that. Once we get a little bit further, we're going to have another round of meetings with each of the individual cities to talk to them about their citizens. We would plan on anticipating implementing the new rate so we can start installing the projects as soon as we possibly can. And then we will finally start looking at the evaluation to increase the expansion of Camp Creek facility. I think most of you know that facility is permitted to treat 24 million gallons a day, 2030. But by the mid-part of 2030 decade, we really need a larger facility. And so we're actually going to start the design process for that in about 2025 so we're ready for the growth when it happens. So with that, I'll certainly turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Clark and Ms. Lindsay. I have in the queue Ms. Gilyard.
Um, thank you. A few questions. And the basic one is the one that I've had ever since August of 2020. And it was exactly how did our city, and this is really a city question, how our city came up with the development projections, which, you know, includes population. So that has a lot to do with the growth that we are anticipating. The council has never seen any of that information. So that's something that we need to have in order to make a decision. That's one thing. The second thing is that I was glad to hear that 40, 24 million gallons per day will, is enough to get us through a certain period of time. So we have a time issue there. But then it's the pumps and all of the other pipes, I guess, that need to be expanded. The critical question is, who's going to pay for this? And I remember, Mr. Clark, there is a waste treatment facility in North Fulton that citizens were going to have to pay $3.50 per month when that expansion occurred. I just don't remember the name of the facility. But who's going to pay for it? And exactly where the pump stations would be constructed to accommodate the growth? And basically, it's some areas in the city, including mine, but there are others where there is absolutely no sewer whatsoever. And so in looking at the map, where I don't see any green lines or any pipes going anywhere or any round circles, and it's really on the furthest, the west-southwest part of the city that I don't see where sewer is planned up to 2040 or 49, whatever. So those are my questions.
Thank you, Ms. Gilyard. Mr. Clark, do you want to respond?
Sure. The rate study that we plan, which I believe you're referring to is the big, the extensions of the sewer lines and...
Just one thing. I did see Tyrone on one of the presentations, and that's in Fayette County, and I didn't understand why it was included.
Because we have an agreement with Tyrone that they send us about 400,000 gallons of wastewater to us instead of down to Peachtree's system.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Gilyard, we acknowledge Mr. Khalid at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
The, and I'm sorry, did I hear you correctly say that everyone in Fulton County paid for the Big Creek facility?
Everybody in our service area. So that does not include the city of Atlanta, but north and south, yes.
This is just kind of a general question. The trunk that you described in this slide, is that the sort of main pipeline of water?
Of wastewater, yes.
I'm sorry?
Of wastewater, yes. Not drinking water, but wastewater.
Okay. The trunk for drinking water, do we just have one in Fulton County, in South Fulton?
I do not know, because the city of Atlanta provides the drinking water to all of the areas in South Fulton. So I don't get involved with where exactly their system is.
Okay, so you do the wastewater, city of Atlanta does the drinking water. Thank you, that's great.
Okay, Dave, Ms. Khalid, let me recognize Councilwoman Ryle.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question. On your earlier slide, you discussed, of course, that you worked on some projections. And I think when we were originally anticipating with our census numbers, where we were thinking we would just hit around 100,000, but we now know we're actually recorded at roughly 107,000, and that's likely to be an undercount. Because, of course, you know, you don't have 100% participation. So given that, do you anticipate needing to make any additional adjustments in that first decade, given that we are already trending ahead of the number that this projection was based on?
I would not think that we need to do it in the first decade. I would certainly, if capacity at the Camp Creek facility for new growth, if we're off by a couple of thousand feet...
Oh, in some areas, and I didn't see as much of this. But I know like along, like Wildus Road in that area, there are still, and even along Enon, there are still a lot of folks who are on septic. Would, you know, as a part of this sewer expansion, would they be then tied in? Or do you leave it as is?
No, we will try to tie in as many people that want to. We have never forced anybody to tie in unless there's an environmental reason for them to be tied into. But whenever we extend sewer, we try to get as many of the surrounding properties to tie in voluntarily.
So you already, when you're going into these areas, you know, of course, who's not currently tied in, and you actually extend the offer for them to connect. Because I know as residents, particularly along Skyview, who've inquired about this. And I think you helped me one recently with one along Enon. So as these lines expand, they could then tie in at that time.
That is correct, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Next we'll have Mayor Pro Tim Willis.
How you doing, David? Thank you for the presentation. One quick question. One of the questions I consistently get from residents who are currently not on Fulton County sewer is, is Fulton County planning to expand sewer capacity anytime soon? So for example, over in the Welcome Mar area, we have several of the residents that's in the Green Tree area, also on the Ben Hill Road area, that's not tied in the sewer. And the only time they get tied into sewer is if they have some type of issues with their sewer, and then, you know, they have to spend major funds to, you know, repair, and then they go through that process. Could you please expand on that, please?
Sure. What I think you're, what referred to is the petition sewer process that we will extend to any neighborhood. If 60% of a neighborhood is willing to tie onto sewer, we will extend sewer into that neighborhood, and then they're still responsible for actually tying into the sewer system. But we will go in and do a large-scale project through the petition sewer process.
Okay, and do you know particularly how much it costs for...
It varies by each individual property owner, because it's based on the number of frontage you have on the main street. So if someone has 100 foot of frontage versus someone with 75 foot of frontage, the person with 100... I don't, but I can certainly get you that. It's usually very reasonable. It's a couple of thousand dollars, which I certainly recognize is harder for some than others. But compared to what a private option would be, it's much more.
Okay. So if I, if you, can you send the entire council the information on how individuals can petition their neighborhood to be tied into Fulton County sewer so that we can get that out to our residents? Because I had no clue that was the process.
Yep, I can definitely do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Chair recognizes Mr. Reeves, Councilman Reeves.
Yes, Mr. Clark, I appreciate you. Thank you for coming on. Just a couple of questions here. As, did I hear in the lady's presentation that you said that Fulton County is going to only maintain eight inches and above pipe?
For sewer lines, yes.
So Fulton County maintains, Fulton County maintains the city of South Fulton sewer. The point I was trying to make was that the scope of our study and the modeling that we did only incorporated pipes 12 inches in diameter and greater.
So in what cases that they're less than 12 inches in diameter?
Well, a lot of the times in a subdivision, it's less than 12 inches. But once the subdivision gets built out and turned over for maintenance, you know, the streets for the city and the utilities for us, we maintain eight-inch lines. We just don't have them in our model.
And the eight-inch model is from the subdivision, from individual properties that tie into the main?
That's right.
But it's not in the model. Can we get that wording in the model?
The level of effort is pretty severe to put all those lines in. And so typically, most communities do not model down to that level of detail.
Detail, okay, I got you. And, but on the existing ones, particularly along the major corridors like Old National Highway and the businesses, and there's a particular case that's right off of, recently, where one of our business loans panning that it was an issue with tying in from 10 foot because of a grease trap that had to be installed. What are the situations like that? And I think you have information on it, but specifically like that case is how do we rectify that in this model for existing businesses to tie in?
That one, I know which one you're talking about, Councilman. That one was a little bit challenging because the property owner did not actually front Old National. It was one property removed from Old National. So he needed to get across another property to tie into the line. So that's the way we can solve that problem. The better way of doing it is extending the sewer lines down the main streets that off, that come off of Old National. But there was some, there were some topography challenges in that case that wasn't an option. So that's why we had to go through his neighbor's backyard.
Okay. And there's another incident too, and Councilmember Willis, the kind of related to this, but Ms. Ferguson on Tahoe Drive. Now, are you familiar with that case?
I believe so.
At what point is there specific cases, Mr. Reeves?
Well, this, yes, sir, Mr. Chair, I can agree, but there's based, just on this one individual piece of property, because there's been several communications on this one. And because, I'm getting to the point is, at what point is a tie-in structure when, if the resident does spend the money to expand it out at the point to where Fulton County takes over? if the resident does spend the money to expand it out at the point to where Fulton County takes over, but and it's Fulton County's responsibility, but the cost is incurred to the homeowner, how, I mean, explain, can you explain that to me?
Sure. And this is this is true for everybody. As a residential property owner, you are responsible from the pipe that leaves your house, it's called a lateral, all the way to where it reaches the sewer main. Even if that sewer main is under the roadway, and in this case, that's exactly what the issue is. She has replaced her lateral from her house to the edge of the roadway with a new pipe, but the existing lateral, which is still her responsibility, from the edge of the road to the main, which is underneath the road, needs to be replaced. And that's where the issue is. Um. The homeowner, this is how this is common all over the place, they can't afford the cost to do that work with a plumber. So the county offers to do that at about three thousand dollars, and we would repair the work and everything, but the program is set up for a one-time payment and not spread out over six months or a year or two years, as some people have requested. So everybody understands that it's their responsibility all the way to the sewer main, even if it's underneath the road. It's how do we pay for it and get it done?
Exactly. And so with the senior services that because they they lot of they face, and it's a kind of a fixed income like deal, they can afford it on a payment plan. So can I'm just asking for seniors, can we just go to a drawing table and come up with some kind of payment plan to uh for so that they can get this fixed, because the issue is turns to an environmental hazard when the sewer backs up into their basement and floods and on a constant basis for a three thousand dollar fix, they can afford, but need a payment plan. Can we can we work on that?
I mean, w- we certainly need to get the commissioners involved, because the commissioners are the ones who set up this program. And if we want to change it, they have to be involved in, but there's no reason why we can't work out some type of payment plan. We used to have a payment plan, but the 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 default rate was pretty s- high. So the commissioners stopped the payment plan about two decades ago.
Two decades, twenty years. Thank you, sir.
Okay, uh thank you. Uh I have a couple of questions, then we'll move on. Uh, one is I hope that everybody who's an elected official on this on this board understands that water is from the city of Atlanta, and sewer comes from Fulton County. I think that's something that everybody who's an elected official needs to understand as they communicate to to their constituencies. However, uh Mr. Clark, uh talk to me about, it's a two-part question. One is sewer spills. What we what have we had this year and what have we been averaging over the last four years, if you can tell me that?
Sure, um sewer spills is something we obviously we don't want to do. Uh but our new um deputy director, who's over our wastewater system, his name is Roy Barnes. He's done a tremendous amount of work in the Morning Creek area, in particular in South Fulton, as well as along Camp Creek, to address a number of the places where we used to have uh sanitary spills. We have not had a spill in South Fulton that was tied to a rain event in over a year and a half now due to his efforts. Uh so we're certainly very happy that. Now, we do get a couple of spills uh a year or few spills a year that are tied to uh some blockages that occur because someone's poured grease down the pipes, or somehow uh leaf and limbs have gotten into the system. But a couple of years ago, we were probably averaging about twenty spills a year in South Fulton that would have in the millions of gallons. This year, we're a fraction of that, I would say probably five or six spills this year, and it's in the low thousands of a gallons. So the work that we're doing is paying off.
So you, if I understand you correctly, you said only about two spills per year has has to be related to a rain event?
There's been no spills related to a rain event in a year and a half.
Okay, all right. You also mentioned in your conversation something concerning the warehouses uh that we share some of the uh sewer responsibility. How do we get paid for that portion that is shared by us?
You mean you mean how does the other cities pay us?
However, we get our money, yes.
Yes, w- w- we 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 have a wastewater meters in the line, so we know exactly how many gallons a month they are sending us, and we bill them on a monthly basis and they pay us.
Because a portion, whatever portion of that belongs to the city of South Fulton, you send it to us?
N- n- no, the city of South Fulton does not get any money from the wastewater, because Fulton County staff maintains the system on your behalf, unlike some of the other cities.
Yeah, but that indirectly, it is getting money on our behalf. That's my point. I just want to make sure that that happens. Now, I saw on the map, you had a proposed sewer line in the Ono Road area?
Yes.
Uh, that concerns me, because uh I'm not saying that they have to be. But I know that that is a there's a lot of agricultural land back there, and I know that the people on Ono Road has been definitely against any sewer. Uh do you know where that the information came that showed that we need that type of sewer on Ono Ono Road came from?
It's coming from primarily the city of.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, Ms. Gilliard.
It it it's primarily coming from the city of Chattahoochee Hills and their developments with a new pump station that will pump the wastewater over to Ono Road, and then from Ono Road, it will get pumps up towards Camp Creek.
I'm nothing against against Chattahoochee Hills, however, it is the responsibility of us to to protect our citizens and and to deliver service that our citizens want. I got a little bit concerned about that, because I know what the people on Ono Road are saying. I know what their lifestyle is, and I think we need to go back and address some of that. Uh. Now, last question for me. We have a, on this land use map, we have what is called nodes, okay? Uh, Mr. Clark, I don't I don't know how, I can't see on your map where the sewer is coming to any of those nodes, but to be effective as a node, to be effective as a node being a center for we we will have density and transportation, I'm concerned about, does anyone do, does anything on your map touch the nodes? I think it's nine of them that we have identified in the city.
I I know for a fact it does at least one, and I think it does more than just one, but one that comes to mind, because we are now pursuing some federal money through the rescue relief funds, is the node at Campbellton, which you are sharing with the city of Chattahoochee Hills.
Right.
And so that is definitely one of the projects that uh we've identified for construction in twenty twenty to twenty twenty-nine uh decade, and hopefully use the recovery money to actually build the pump station and the the force main.
Well, I would like to go back and have some more conversation with you guys about that. Uh because a node is nothing without sewer, and I also would like to come get back with you on the conversation concerning Ono Road. Uh that's particularly concerning with me, okay?
Sure, not not a problem.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, and Miss Mr. Lindsay, we appreciate you. Uh Mr. Clark, next item, please.
Oh, wow.
Next item, proposed twenty twenty-two legislative agenda, Andrew Long with A R Long Company, L L C.
Before we get started, Ms. Ms. Gilliard, you are, your mic is hot again. I'm not saying anything. I don't know what you're talking about. I'm saying things, we can hear you. I'm not talking. Okay. There you go. Thank you very much, man. Go right ahead, Ms. Long.
Mr. Mayor and uh Council, Honorable Mayor and Honorable Council, my name is Andrew Long, A R Long Company. Anna Emmison has also joined the call as well as a part of uh our team. I am here today to present to you your time, but before I get started, of note, uh I do need to mention that uh redistricting maps for the state of Georgia that will be in place for the next ten years. Um so as far as city of South Fulton's leftover from last year, this was Representative William Bodie in our legislative delegation, and there's another gentleman in the House of Representatives. His name is Representative uh Casey Carpenter, who is working with William Bodie, and I think he has plans to introduce this bill at the beginning of the session uh next year. Number two will be trucking violation cameras. This will be very similar to red light cameras that were introduced several years ago uh in the state of Georgia, but the purpose of this bill is to take pictures of and then we find each of those uh trucks that are in violation. Number three, the road renaming for Congressman John Robert Lewis. Um we have the legislative delegation and the uh city of South Fulton City Council um were on two different pages last year when this bill was introduced. A road naming bill is actually very simple. Uh it gets added to the Transportation Committee Bill uh down in the House and Senate. And uh once it's passed, it's just an up or down vote of all of the road renaming's for the entire state. And um but there was some confusion on exactly what road to rename. The city of South Fulton City Council and the city of South Fulton Legislative Delegation, um we are going to coordinate a meeting between both sides so that we can iron out exactly what we want to do. Once that meeting has happened and everyone is in consensus, I take that to the General Assembly, add that to the Transportation Committees of both chambers, and get that bill passed. Finally, uh strengthened candidate residency requirements. This was a measure that was on our uh legislative agenda last year, that the legislative delegation decided not to take up at the time. They wanted more information for this. So um that meeting will also uh have the opportunity to discuss exactly what needs to be discussed on residency, um the the candidate residency requirements, and we'll, you know, draw our conclusions from that as well. Now, of note, again, January tenth, the second Monday in January, second Monday in January of every year by constitution, is when the legislative um session will commence, when the General Assembly will begin. So we want to make sure that we have everything ironed out, and uh before I give yield the floor for questions, I want you to keep in mind, last year, the twenty, well, this year, the twenty twenty-one legislative agenda, we had nine priorities and one measure to follow um medical cannabis. Uh that was on our legislative agenda, and nine plus one, the only bill that ended up passing was the successful annexation of the city of South Fulton, and I say that to say I think that nine or ten priorities um i- is not reasonable in a posture of a Republican-led General Assembly, House and Senate, who are only gonna allow a small number of Democratic bills to pass through both chambers. Um so I wanted to keep um the um the the number of priorities as small as we can going into twenty twenty-two, but of course, looking forward to your input and can amend this proposed legislative agenda uh once I get your consensus. So, Mr. Mayor, uh that is my presentation. I yield the floor for any questions.
Thank you uh so much, Mr. Long. The chair recognizes Ms. Councilwoman Gomes.
Uh good evening, and thank you, uh Mr. Long, for your report. Uh one question in regards to the cameras for the trucks. I know you mentioned about um size and um coming through the areas, but do they have a list of restricted roads um that these uh trucks are violating? Because that's pretty much the main issue is that they're still traveling on the roads that we restricted through our um ordinance. So is that part of that as well versus just the height and the, you know, weight requirements? You're on mute, Mr. Long.
I apologize. Thank you, Councilmember uh Gomes. I I do not have specific language for this bill yet, because it has not been agreed to a- as far as our priorities. We just submitted to you uh the council for as a proposed list of priorities, but my communication was with uh Chief Meadows in uh communicating this effort, and I would have to get with him on the specifics of the language before we submit it uh to the legislative delegation for uh consideration.
Okay.
I can I can comment on that if you'd like, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
So um what, there's a legal definition of what constitutes a a uh commercial eighteen-wheeler vehicle. We would use that legal definition, and then we would erect those cameras on those on in those restricted on those restricted streets. Basically, they would be along um our truck routes in areas where they're not allowed to go. That's where we would erect all of those cameras. And so uh we're looking at getting that that passed as a state law, which would give other municipalities the ability to do the same with respects to their truck routes, if that answers your question.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that those restricted streets were the ones that were incorporated in there as well. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Chief, and and Councilmember. Chair recognizes Councilman Councilman Khalid.
Hi, uh Mr. Long, um SB two oh two passed last year, which uh there was a there was a portion of SB two oh two which provided for a state takeover of our county elections board, and though though it provided for the takeover, it didn't really detail how that takeover could happen or what the criteria would be. It was it was still left open. Do you know if there are any plans to flesh that out anymore or change that in any way?
Thank you, Councilmember Khalid, for uh for the question. Um I would literally have to reread two oh two again. There were many many aspects of two oh two, not just taking away polling places or adding um so many Saturdays before the election day, but you are absolutely correct. There was a provision in there for the takeover of local um election boards. That has not happened to this to this point, but I will say that bill did go into effect July one. Um so the bill did go into effect. Please allow me to read that um that provision over again and get with you offline to make sure anything else hasn't uh already happened. But to my knowledge, nothing has happened to this point, and for the special session that's coming up, there is no room in the in in the governor's um um proclamation to address that during the special session. So they can't even bring that up at this point. So I don't think they can further anything from two oh two during the special session, but please allow me to read that provision again and get back with you on the specifics of what that says.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. Uh it's my understanding that some smaller municipalities, they have begun to make moves to do that um in rural areas, and there had been some saber rattling about Fulton County. Um so I'm, you know, I'm just very concerned about that. The ca- can you just briefly tell us, because I I know the agenda for that special session has changed a couple of times uh with with discussions about crime maybe being on there and and about uh buckhead annexation being on there. Other than redistricting, what will they be taking up in this special section session in November?
Thank you, Councilmember Khalid. Uh you hit the nail on the head. The city of uh the city of Buckhead proposal will not be until twenty twenty-two. Um that bill, for better or for worse, regardless of how we feel about that legislation, I will tell you as much inside baseball as I can, that bill has an author whose last name is Beach. Brandon Beach is a state senator from North Fulton, and because it has Beach's name on the bill, it is almost dead on arrival when it gets to the House. Now, he can work his magic and try to get it past the Senate, but when it gets to the House, um his daughter is married to a gentleman in the House of Representatives who introduced a bill last year uh to oust the current Speaker, David Ralston. And because of that, anything that has Beach's name on it will not make it through the House of Representatives. That said, that look, trickier things have happened, but they, to answer your question directly, they will not be able to take up that legislation during the special session. The proclamation only says that they can adopt the uh newly drawn redistricting maps for the state of Georgia, and there are local measures that they will consider, which means it implies, it doesn't say directly, but it implies that um as you stated, because of the failure, what's the best way to say this, of being able to get a handle on crime in the city of Atlanta, um they have, they did award or appoint uh a special committee over the summer to look to see whether the state should intervene, and I think the the And I think the, the second measure in the proclamation says that it will, it will allow considerations for local municipalities. Which means they're going to look at that. I don't know if they're gonna vote on anything, but they will take it up. And a lot of it is generally political posturing. I don't know if they'll do it, but the proclamation opens it up to that. Um, i- i- if they might take it up, they might consider it.
And I wasn't, I'm sorry, and I, I, I didn't mean for you to go off on that particular tangent. I wasn't asking, although it's super interesting. I wasn't really asking about Atlanta's issues, but is, is there any possibility for local legislation or anything beyond redistricting that might affect our city?
No, 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 absolutely not. Uh, no. And if there is trickeration, like I said, uh, uh, on the, on, at the beginning of my, um, presentation. We are in a great position as far as relationships. The city of South Fulton is in a great position at the General Assembly. The um, the chairman of local legislation in the House and the chairman of local legislation in the Senate when the House's chairwoman. Um, they both like the city of South Fulton, they both like uh Mayor Bill Edwards, they both like me. And we're in a good position when it comes to local legislation. So if anything um does potentially service, surface that would affect us, they would give me a call uh and alert me to that immediately.
Okay, thank you. So I, and I'll just end with there, I, I have heard a conversation about possible amendments to our charter. To create at-large districts or change the districts in the city of South Fulton. So if you would just keep an eye on that, that'd be uh helpful to, to all of us. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Khalid. Uh, Chair acknowledges now Mayor Portion Willis.
Um, thank you, uh, Mr. Long. Mr. Long, uh, yes, we all, uh, think by now have received calls from community members. Who are working with uh the state legislators to make changes to our um the composition of our governance. And um, we now know that uh the census came back and said that we have a hundred and seven thousand residents accounted for. The maps were based off of eighty-eight thousand residents. And so uh, I think it would be a great time for you to uh arrange a meeting with this council and mayor and our delegation. Roger Bruce is the head of the delegation and he more than likely will be more receptive to meeting with us. Um, we haven't had a meeting with our delegation um in probably a couple of years. Um, and a lot of it was because of the pandemic, but because of the redistrict, the redistricting. I think it's a good time for us to meet so that we can have full transparency of what is going to happen. As far as uh changing the composition of our governance or making any type of pertinent changes to our uh um, our charter. Because we are up for a charter review um when we approach five years. And so we need to have that transparent conversation.
Yes, ma'am. Um, thank you, Councilmember Willis. Um, yes. That, I can assure you, within the next thirty days, you will be uh informed or communicated with. Um, for uh the coordination of a meeting between the city of South Fulton uh City Council and the city of, city of South Fulton Legislative Delegation. That is in the works and you will, you, you will be communicated with your office specifically over the next thirty days for that meeting to uh, to commence.
Okay, thank you. The other thing is um, we ask uh for you to work with um, the delegation to, for us to get a transport license. Um, and it's my understanding that that had to go through the state process. Uh, are you, are you still gonna pursue that? Is that still on a, on the agenda?
It was not on my proposed agenda. Uh, it is uh something that was on the agenda for this year, the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one legislative agenda. But the decision from the legislative de- delegation was to not take up that issue at this time. So I would have to get back with uh Representative and now Chair of the delegation, Roger Bruce. Uh, to see if um, you know, that has changed and he does, the delegation wants to take it up for twenty twenty two. And I believe that will be on our agenda for this uh coordinated meeting that I said you will hear from us be, uh, within the next thirty days.
And I would ask that you speak with our fire chief. We now, we now have a new fire chief.
Yes.
And our city manager uh regarding that, uh, because our fire chief may have some, um, you know, s- some helpful relationships in that regard. Um, I want to bring one thing to your attention regarding the uh truck uh restricted, the, the restricted roads. I worked heavily on the truck ordinance and one of the things, there's a caveat um to and I think we should, and I, and I agree with Chief, we need to just leave it as restricted roads. Because uh, we, it would not be a good idea for us to include our roads. It's a local uh issue for one thing. But the, the caveat is in order for us to restrict roads, we have to go to Fulton County for approval. If you don't re, if you recall that legislation, that was, that was thrown in the mix about three years ago. So in order for us to restrict any more roads in the city of South Fulton, we have to get approval from the county. It doesn't make sense, but that's a state law now.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention and I think Chief knows that uh as well. Uh, we really need that legislation in place. These commercial trucks are uh invading our uh communities and impacting our quality of life. And if you could really push hard to work with this uh delegation, I know Chief talked with uh Representative Bazemore on the House side, but I have talked to Rep. uh Senator Halpert on the Senate side. And so if you could talk with uh her to see if she can introduce it on the Senate side. And Bazemore introduce it on the House side, I mean, that would be greatly appreciated as we really need that um in progress.
I certainly will. I'm go, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, thank you so much. Last question, are you advocating for us on the federal level?
Uh, that just implemented, yes, you all approved that, I believe, two Tuesdays ago. And I am beginning the process to uh consult for you on the federal level as well. Yes.
So, so I would ask that you convene a meeting, if you, just like you're doing on a state level. Uh, if you can convene a meeting with all our congressional representatives at this council, most cities do that. Um, when we go to National League of Cities, we have the opportunity to lobby on the hill, but COVID has impacted that. And so, but typically when um, the, when we have those conferences. Uh, uh, their lobbyists coordinate meetings with their congressional legislator, legislators. And um, and they meet, you know, they caucus with their congre- congressional legislators during those the National League of Cities uh, uh conferences. So the, I would ask that if you can try to get a um, a meeting with our congressional representatives. Not with just the mayor, but this entire council.
Yes, ma'am.
Manager, uh, as you're doing um on the uh state level uh at some point. This year, within this fiscal year.
Well, okay, that started October one. Okay. Uh, yes, Councilmember Willis, first of all, let me say um, if you can't tell how excited I am to have this opportunity. I'm already excited and honored to represent you down at the state level. But to the federal level as well, Anna and I are very excited. We're, I mean, my bags are packed. You guys just gave me the ticket and I'm about to get on the plane. My wheels are not up yet. Like, we're not, we're, I'm not, I'm not wheels up yet. But um, uh, we are starting the process. I mean, I, again, you, you confirmed that uh two Tuesdays ago. And I've already started communicating with several of our uh congressmen in the state. There are fourteen congressional districts, as you know. And then the two uh US senators. So yes, that, that is in the works and I will be doing that very soon. And should have something like that confirmed, as you said, within this fiscal year. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, well, the two that, the two that represent us is just Scott and, and um, and Williams.
Williams, yes, ma'am.
And then, and, and on the Senate side, you already know who represent us and some of us already have those relationships. And most, some of us have been lobbying in for years on the hill with National League of Cities and we typically go around March. We just have not had, we just couldn't go last year because of COVID and I think COVID is gonna impact us again this year. So if you could try to get that arranged, um, that would be very helpful for us. Thank you.
I, I will do it. Thank you, Councilmember.
You, Mayor Portion, uh, I acknowledge Council, Councilwoman Rao.
Thank you, uh, Mayor. A couple of quick questions and one is a, a, an observation. Uh, Mr. Long, um, one, is it possible for you to get a list from our delegation about any roads that they have submitted in uh the footprint of our city to be renamed? I'm aware that Hamilton Road has now been named Hank Aaron Parkway. Um, a sign has been erected on Hamilton Road near the new Amazon facility right before, well, it's in our city limits. Before you um get to the Cascade Palmetto intersection. So um, again, um, and I'm following up because I know that was the road we originally talked about at the John Lewis Parkway.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's already been named something else. So again, if they, if you can get a list of any roads that they have submitted in our footprint. That would be helpful. Um, and second, um, as it relates to your work on the federal level. I hope we would have the same process as we have, uh, where you would be presenting whatever items. Whether it's initially, I'm sure, working with the staff to come up also with that agenda. And of course, bringing it before this body um as it relates to whatever that federal agenda is. Would that be the case?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. There will be um, not quarterly, it'll be more of monthly reports. And uh, I, I already have a meeting scheduled with the uh, with City Manager, Ms. Sattler Jones, twice a month. And uh, we will be discussing not only state level progress, but progress on the federal level as well. So yes, there are initiatives that I will be working on specifically for the city of South Fulton. Um, to bring in uh measures, relationships and funding into the city, all from the federal level. So yes, there will be reports on that level as well. And as far as transportation names and naming um of roads in the city. Um, to my knowledge, on, on, on the state level, what submitted um none of the delegation has submitted anything on the state level uh for names, for names of roads to be renamed. Uh, not to my knowledge, especially not this session. But um, it might have been something done maybe before, but what I will certainly do is get with the Legislative Delegation. And uh, and do a double check on any road renaming in the city of South Fulton and I can report that back to you. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. Cause like I said, I just happened to notice the sign and it caught my attention because we had had, you know, this request from the last legislative session. So um, you know, again, and it, and I don't know, it may not have um originated from our delegation. Cause I think in the past, we've been told, it's not restricted in that way. In terms that you represent the area and you making a request, is that correct?
Say that one more time, you representing the area and you making a request?
W- w- where the roads are. So that request for a renaming doesn't have to just be initiated by our delegation, is that correct?
In theory, someone else outside of the delegation, I believe, could submit something to the Transportation Committee for a, a road naming that's not in their city, I believe. But I don't see why they, wh- why they would do that and I could be wrong. Um, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but Kenneth, do you know offhand uh i- if a different delegation member from a different city can submit a, a road naming change for a city that's not theirs?
I don't think there's against it, but again, like you said, I don't know why somebody would come into another city wanting to rename a street, so. Well.
Yeah, because the first thing the chairman would do in the House and Senate would contact the city. And say, what, someone wants to rename a, a road in your district or in your city or street in your city, do you know anything about this? So to my knowledge, I don't think anyone has done that, but I can double check everything that has been done. Uh, within, for, as far as road renaming in the city of South Fulton. I'll double check that and report back to you.
Okay, thank you so, so much. So um, just again, um, any, any light you can shed on that. And thank you. I see I'm in the chat. Um, Ms. Willis um, um, indicated that it does run in the area. But the sign is in our city and even with that, I was just curious, cause he, he lived off Hamilton Road. So maybe that is why, well, yeah, you can get to it from there, Cascade. So maybe that's where uh originated from. Thank you. That, that, that was it. Those, those are my only questions.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Rao. We'll acknowledge Councilman Reeves and then we'll go on to the next presentation.
Okay, uh, awesome. Uh, when it comes to the um truck enforcement. Can we look at adding that, cause you said some key, that be height, weight limit restrictions? I wanna see the, on our local bridges uh that this municipalities have to pay for, for repair or replacement. That we can restrict that from the weight limit to be added on to that legislation for the truck routes? For the trucking ordinance, for the cameras.
In addition to the fine, have the company assessed for any damage that they, is that what you're saying?
No, restrict community bridges that municipalities have to pay for, for repair or replacement. That from the height and weight limit of these eighteen wheelers that come through, that they can't use their bridge.
I would have to refer to Chief Meadows for that one.
They're not, they're not allowed to use the bridge um anyway. So I think if you're talking about maybe adding some impact fees onto that, or them coming across the impact of the um, um, the um the weight of the uh truck coming across the bridge, I think that's something that we'll have to look at state law. If it already exists somewhere in state law, then we could make it part of that um, part of that ordinance, I mean, or part of that law. Am I right in saying that, um, Mr. Long?
I believe that's correct, yes.
If it already exists in some laws, then we're able to kind of piggyback off that and make it part of the um, um, the, the law that we're trying to get passed here.
That's correct.
Correct, correct. And on those signs, can we have going, like, it's a, the fines double? If you uh, you know how they got speedified double if you in this zone, we can erect that little language on those signs? So it's, cause the impact fees will be on top of the fine.
I think, I think as a municipality, we only have the ability to fine up to a thousand dollars. Um, and that would be the maximum fine. What we're asking is that those fines be, for all of the violations to be up in the range of the maximum fine.
Correct, particularly coming across the bridges, the community bridges that this municipality has to pay for to repair or replace.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir. Okay, good deal. And um, this uh, and Mr. Long, uh, the delegation meeting that you said, within the next thirty days. That will be in the middle of them convening for session. So could we try to get this meeting before they convene on November the third?
Um, I do not believe that that is possible within the next two weeks to confirm. Um, your, the, the city of South Fulton City Council and the city of South Fulton Legislative Delegation. We wanted to give you at, at, as a courtesy enough time for everybody to make sure that their calendars are aligned and the dates are set. Uh, I know that it'll be during the special session, but we are not able, as a legislative delegation. We are not able to do anything in, in this special session. It's not like we can pass any laws or do any local legislation. This is, this session is specifically only for the General Assembly at, as a whole to adopt the newly drawn redistricting maps uh for the entire state, which are, have already been drawn. So it, we, we won't be able to do anything anyway. And whether it's during that special session or shortly thereafter, but still prior to um, the second Monday of January. I, I just believe that it's important to get both of you all together um for, for communication purposes. To make sure that we have an iron clad twenty twenty two legislative agenda. But to get everyone together and on the same page and on the same date before October third, I, 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 Councilmember, I mean, I
Even virtually?
I don't think that's possible.
Even virtually?
Well, I'm let, let me
Just think possibilities, just think possibilities.
Let me put it to, let me communicate with uh Ms. Sattler Jones and also get with the Legislative Delegation Chair. And we can see if we can push the meeting up and I'll let you know a- as soon as possible. We were going to send, I believe, potential dates anyway. But um, all of those dates were at the moment going to be after November third. But let's, I will reconvene with them. I'll get them on the phone and see if we can push it up.
Now, we can always go for a Tuesday walk as a group session. I, I, I would love to do that, you know, we can walk and talk at the same time.
Yes, sir.
Well, so just possibilities. Also too, as I'm glad you excited on the federal level and your bags are packed and you ready to go. So those infrastructure dollars that Are you ready to go? So those infrastructure dollars that they have, and so see, can we? Cause you can just help me out for my own identification is see if those infrastru- infrastructure dollars can come directly to the city. As you see that we're going to need that directly to the city.
I don't want to get ahead of myself. I know this report for today is only on the state level, but a part of my agenda on the federal level. Is healthcare with this COVID relief um funds is transportation. And getting funded for transportation specifically for the city and of course, infrastructure. That, that, that is all a part. Of my package and my priorities on the federal level, but that's a different, that's a different presentation. So don't let me get ahead of myself.
Oh, I don't want you to, sir, but as long as we on that same line, I think that uh you ready for takeoff, sir?
Thank you, council member.
Thanks, Councilman Reeves. Okay, uh, Councilman, Councilman Reeves, just for your education, we are entitlement city now. And some of those federal dollars do come directly to us.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Long, thank you so much. You've been great for us uh in your capacity. And we, 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 all of us would love to continue to work with you on both the state and federal level. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Honorable Counsel. I'll be communicating with you very soon. Thank you all.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, next presentation.
Yes, the next presentation is the municipal court update. Uh this presentation will be provided by Ladon Blackett Jones, who serves as the interim court administrator.
All right, good evening, everyone. How are you? Good to see you again. Um, I am excited to bring to you what may be my last update before the end of the year, because you all keep a pretty packed schedule of things you need to go over. Um, so I'm gonna try to fit in a lot of information very quickly. Next slide, please. Uh, so that you all can get some uh background for those of you all who we have not presented to you before, a little bit about our team. The current state of our court and then give you some uh some information about what is next and what you all may need. Going in the future for your new uh court administrator. So excuse me if I talk really fast. Next slide, please. So um as you all know, our court officially opened in January second, twenty eighteen. We have held court in Union City and in East Point. As long as community court, which is owned by uh Fulton County. We are currently a hybrid court that handles traffic offenses, all of our city ordinances, code cases. And any state authorized misdemeanors, which is really marijuana, stop listing and a couple of other small offenses. We are currently holding court, um as I mentioned, hybridly, uh which means we are also having it in uh our art center of the city of South Fulton. On Button Road is our temporary location, so we can have in-person court for those who need it. We do not currently handle code board cases. We handle code court cases. We're gonna talk about that a little more and um later in the presentation. Next slide, please. So we have court um pretty much every day uh of the week for the most part, but let me explain for those who may not know. How a case gets to us. When Chief Meadows and his awesome team write a citation in those limited areas I mentioned. His team worked it up. Some citations require supervisor approval, which I think is great. Uh and then it is entered by his uh, his team of record keeping folks and then it's sent over to us. Once it's sent over to us, there is some data entry that we also do. Um and then we prepare the case for court. Takes us a few days to get the case prepared for court, but in the recent months, uh we have worked very hard on some technology that is allowing people to get in within. A couple of days, which is really awesome. So allows people to pay their citations right away. Um and so that they don't forget about it if they're like me. Uh and then about uh seven days, uh two, two weeks before a calendar date. The calendar is published by my court thirteen. Um and then the case occurs forty-five to sixty days from the date they receive their citation. In municipal court, you have the opportunity to go before a jury trial, which could be a bind over and it's handled in state court. Or a trial before our chief judge here in municipal court. And that takes anywhere from nine to a hundred and twenty days for a, a case to go. Uh from clean arraignment to the trial counter. So overall, it should take someone approximately six months to complete an entire case. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, we are in court every day. We have recently reopened first appearance. What that is, is whenever a person is arrested for a criminal offense or a local offense. They have the right to be seen before it does within forty-eight hours without a warrant, seventy-two hours with a warrant. So throughout the COVID nineteen pandemic, we did not have first appearance. We have recently re-initiated that. With their re-initiation of first appearance, we are in court pretty much every single day of the week for one calendar or another. Um, in addition to that, we are working on a massive backlog project. That backlog project is gonna seem like some of those COVID nineteen cases, so that when you all move forward, starting in twenty twenty-two, you're caught up as possible. Next slide. So before I go into the current state of court, I do want to tell you about our team. Next slide, please. You all know, we have Chief Judge Michael Sheridan. Who's been with us for about three years, who's doing an excellent job. Our case manager, Terry Stevens. Uh Tiffany Tinsel and Shunika Wright will be newly appointed senior court clerks in the near future. We have created, as I mentioned to you here in my financial presentation, that we want to create. An opportunity for people to be able to move up, so they can stay consistent and really grow with the department. Next slide. And then we have our newest court clerk, Alicia Vincent. She will be joined in this new fiscal year with two additional junior clerks. That will help us keep pace with all the citations we have. Our interim solicitor, Christine Sears, who has come in um so that she is able to uh assist on the solicitor side. As well as CPS, which is our probation provider. Can everybody hear me clearly?
Yes.
Okay, all right, very good. And then myself. Next slide, please. So as you all know, I came in in May of twenty twenty-one to try to help get some things organized and we've made a lot of changes. Um, we have created a clerk for every job, make sure things get done. This is a big point to mention, and I'll mention it in my final slide, that it is very important. And our police department needs to do the great job they're doing. They're knocking it, knocking it out of the box. Your clerk's office needs to grow with your police department. Now, the police department handles felony. They handle cases that may go over juvenile and your municipal court clerk is not due that. However, um many of your citations, which you all will see soon, will come over to our office. And so as you all take on additional things like the tr- the truck camera, just like the school zone camera. Your clerk's department needs to grow with your police department. So every time Chief has one of those great promotions uh or graduations. You ought to be thinking, okay, how many more clerks do we need to add in the next, next fiscal year to keep up the pace with what our police department is doing? Uh because we are writing citations um quite appropriately for a city of our size, we need to make sure the backend can keep up with it. Next slide, please. So to that end, let's talk a little bit about the state of the court right now. So I want you all to understand where we are and where we are going. Some, some things that needed to be implemented were some consistent systems. Uh and some service things for our customers, defendants, wherever you would like to call them. We call them customers now in the clerk's office. Because we are a mutual office for the city to make sure that the case is our process. We make sure we have better communication with our police department, better communication with our customer service representatives, so that we can create that consistency. Next slide, please. So here's an overview of the cases that we have processed. You all, this gives you a bit of high level view of, of what has gone on. If you know. Citations were written in two thousand and seventeen before we began actually having court in January two thousand and eighteen. And you can see each year, the number of citations increased um with the number of cases paid taking a law in twenty twenty. And if you all remember what happened then. But as you can see in twenty twenty-one, there was a huge jump. And that jump was because I knew as solicitor coming over as court administrator, that there were some things that were not being done, very simple things that goes into that system. That I mentioned to you all. So for example, we went back and looked at every case that had been paid but not closed in twenty twenty and twenty nineteen. There were dozens of them. And the way that our system works, until you close the cases, you can't get the money. So that huge jump. That you see from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one had multiple reasons. One, the chief of police, the takeover of Fulton Industrial Boulevard, the number of citations appearing are increasing every single year. But in addition to that, we had a larger team that could process the cases. But most importantly, we have uh sat down and went through all of those closed cases from previous years to make sure that that revenue. Makes it into the clerk's office and then into the general fund. So we are already for the remainder of this year, well ahead of what we've done in the previous year. And some of those systems that I put in place, if they are continued by the next administrator, will help to ensure that that happens into the future. Next slide. So here's a quick review of some of those improvements that I mentioned to you all. And I'm mentioning them to you so that as you all look. And meet with your future administrators, you can have an idea of what it is that you're asking for. Number one, a citation import. I mentioned to you all earlier that there is a process by which we receive the citations from the police department. That was being done manually for a very long time. So the police have got to write a citation. Uh those that are not e-tickets, which they have been growing in the number of e-tickets, which makes it easier to write a citation, which makes the number of citations go up. But for the manually written citations, they are input by our team and the police department. They are hand delivered to the clerk's office in municipal court. And up until May, they were being manually re-entered. This took huh dozens and dozens of man hours to redo something that had already been done. Back to the IT team, Neymar and his team, um the backend folks, we're working on those every day to increase the number of citations that are manually imported. That means someone can pay their citation quicker, um so that they don't forget about it and make sure that the information is more correct. And make sure that we don't lose citations just in the old or going from one place to the other. The second improvement was project management, just so that because we are a court that is so big, we need a way to process all the information. So I know you all don't always get to see on your side how much work is being done, but we recently sent one of our new clerks to clerk's training. And what surprised sounds that the majority of the other cities that are receiving training for the first time, they're in court one day a week, one day a month. Many of them are part-time and have other jobs. The city of South Fulton is so big. It is so absolutely big that it means that we require five and six clerks all day long, Monday through Friday. Uh and so part of management to make sure that work is organized made a big difference. We also have online service. So if you guys wanna go to southfultoncourt.com, we have a lot of online options. This began at my website when I was solicitor and I transferred over to being the court website. I am currently working with our communications team, who's already met, to make sure at least it transfers to the city website to keep that functionality. One important improvement was customer service, where sometimes people couldn't get the points on the phone. Um, they tend to get emails from us. We respond to calls, emails, customer contacts within forty-eight hours or less business hours. We have come up with a system where we work with Chief of Six, who I love, who Jacob, our front desk reception. As well as our team to ensure that customers can stay in with communication as much as possible uh for our court outside. We have improved file management. We also have a new office location due to the movement of the code department. I wanna stop and just say how important that is. As someone who has worked with this city from the beginning. Having this thing where your staff feels comfortable, well, when they get cut out by somebody over school zone tickets, they can take a breath. And they can have a cup of coffee. Makes a difference in productivity. So that's just a little note there. In addition to that, we have created that court date consistency so that officers know when to write their court date. That means less tickets are being lost, less tickets are going to the fold because they have a, a court date uh missed because the law court date was written on there. In addition to that, a hybrid court, which is in-person as well as online, makes it much easier. And finally, we got a tracking. Next slide. I already mentioned our website, southfultoncourt.com. We have three online diversity classes. This is something unique that other jurisdictions do not have. We have our full shoplifting class, our hands-free class in Georgia. The law has a weird little loophole where it doesn't mon- monitor that people receive a hands-free device. And so as long as you don't have a hands-free device attached, then it does not go on your record and you get a chance to show before. I have a hands-free device and therefore your case is dismissed. I think they're fixing that, but until they do, we have an education for it. You don't just show your device. You have to learn about the safety. You have to learn about why this is important and how the law was made. It is a quick program, but it is online to make sure citizens in South Fulton know why you should or should not drive with um out a hands-free device. And we also have code clean, which is a diversion program with the code enforcement department. Finally, we are in, we are in taking for court innovation. It is a program that again will increase the functionality for people who receive. A citation so they can communicate with the solicitor, with the judge and all that prior to court. And finally, the, the city kiosk, which is our first, we have as part of uh city hall. So that we can communicate with citizens and assist them in real time um and ensuring that they get the service they need. Next slide. Please, you can go to the virtual video page at southfultoncourt.com forward slash virtual video. We have a lot of videos for our customers. So when they call in and say, I'm scared about court, we could just explain it to them, but we also send them a video that they hear. This is a five-minute video that explains to you what happened before court. Having a hard time using the technology to filter, please see, here's a video that's one minute long to explain that to you. So please do prove that it's super helpful. Uh final slide. So here are our goals for um the last quarter. We're gonna make sure that we get hybrid court really fully functioning. Continue with the front desk and support innovation with all technology base. We have worked, also working on a huge backlog project. So all of those cases from twenty twenty that did not get heard. We are hearing almost three thousand cases within a four-day period. It's gonna be hard, long, stressful work for the court staff. For court security, but we're gonna get it done so that we can move into twenty-two on time. We also have the school zone cases, which are building up faster than we can have court. As I mentioned to you all, we are in court every single day. And so we are creating a process that won't be able to occur in twenty twenty-two, but we try to fast track many of the school zone cases. And play catch-up with the over twenty-four hundreds, my last count from June, that we need to hear. And most of our parking citation system has to be overhaul or less. We're upgrading our filing system and we're starting the additional clerk very soon. We also have a new public defender process where we still have a public defender for every time someone requests it in court. But it's not someone who is on a consistent salary, who had a rotating panel of public defenders that combination helps share the cases. And of course, you all will be getting a new court uh solicitor, uh excuse me, administrator. Next slide. Um, so please, things that I want you all to consider as you all uh move forward and consider your courts. Already mentioned, as the police grow, so do the courts. So when you start having more police, you gotta think about how do we make sure that that's equal on the court side. Um, code court and code board, I think every three and a half months, the last three and a half years, it's come and said, do we need both? Yes. The city of South Fulton is doing, East Point College Park and all those other cities combined, we need both because there is no capacity to be able to hear the large volume of cases. So we will have to hear in court. There's only seven days in the week, they're already full. Um, and so we have to make sure that we have that. And also there's a hierarchy to those cases, which some being handled by citizens, I think is both creative as well as helpful. Um, following the process, it is important that you all, as council people, when you advocate for your constituents. Are you are certain to follow the process? Because what we don't want to happen is have a day in court, we have to bring you in as a witness. Because a case did not follow the correct process. There's a process for all of them that possibly follows you. Check in on that process, but please do follow the process. And then finally, as you come up with new ideas, and I did not know this was gonna be presented before me. Uh, but when you say, hey, we want a detail because this issue is going on in addition, or hey, we want a new initiative like the truck route. Those things are great, but again, make sure that your staff is able to assist with those, with those new processes they need to go hand in hand. Uh with that, that is my presentation and I am available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Let me uh alert the, the council that we have thirty minutes before the next meeting. I think the chair recognizes first Miss, uh the Mayor Pro Tim. I saw her name pop up on the hand first.
Yes, so uh we were given, some of us who have taken the Ferguson Municipal Court Class, we were given a template. On um the best practices, the standard operating procedures our court is supposed to be run by. Are you familiar with that? Uh, Ms. Jones?
I want to say we Ferguson illegal case?
No, no, no.
No, I'm not.
The class is called, the class is called the municipal, the Ferguson Municipal Class. It's on the Georgia Municipal Association offers the class. And in that class, they give us, they give elected officials uh an outline of best practices. And it's a template that all municipal courts should follow. Uh, and, and so my question is have, are you familiar with that?
Yes, I think that Councilwoman Rao did share that with me, but if there's a specific question you may have about it, I'm happy to answer it.
Yeah, so my specific question is, this council at one point was getting quarterly reports on. Citations, tickets, you know, um with uh, how many citations were issued? Uh, uh how many cases were heard? Uh, and the penalties that were associated. And you know, ha- adjudicated uh cases and um, and so. The presentation, thank you, was very informative, but I didn't see any of that in, in here. Do, when will we start getting those type of reports?
Uh, well, as you are aware, I'm just coming in. If you can go back a couple of slides, however, to slide, uh. I have the numbers on there. I'm gonna sort that for you. Thank you. Keep going. There you go, right there. Go back.
Okay, so that's what I missed. I didn't see that. And then, uh, while we get back to that. Okay. Okay. Yeah. That's what I was looking for. I didn't see that. Okay. And so the other thing I have a question about is the, uh, system to uh, hear cases and adjudicate cases virtually. Did you talk, did you touch over that?
Yeah. So that is a hybrid system that I mentioned to you, um, and I don't, it's, it's a long process of this.
Okay. Okay. So that's what I didn't understand because I know that you, uh, had talked about you all adopting that process. And that process, um, council is where, um, basically, uh, the judge can read, you might, can you give him, give him, give them a synopsis of how that works? But he basically can adjudicate the case without, uh, a person coming into court. Uh, and, um, you, they can go through the process basically virtually without a person having to come before a judge, uh, or the solicitor.
That's correct, Councilwoman. So right now our hybrid court is set up where virtual is the default. Um, and so what happens is our police officers have done great at transferring over and putting all the citations. We would normally say up here at this location, it does come to this website. On that website, everybody is able to sign into a room, which was like this one, and we go through the entire process. We're able to take signatures on our plea sheets online. We walk them through that process very carefully. We are looking at over a hundred and fifty, sometimes two hundred cases at nine A M. and separately at one P M. Every Tuesday and Thursday, we are having an appearance. In the case someone is having severe technical difficulties or we find that they, um, have, are requesting to be in person. We have individual in-person dates. We reschedule them and have them heard at Button Road. Those again are also hybrid, so there are some people who may be able to appear online while we are seeing people in person. Does that answer your question?
Yes. And lastly, uh, Chief Meadows recommended previously that, uh, they use that some of the, uh, ticket revenue, uh, money be used to hire its solicitors specifically to handle those cases. And, um, uh, Chief Meadows, is that still your recommendation?
Well, after I discussed it with, um, with, uh, Solicitor, um, well, with Ladon, uh, we decided against that as a strategy moving forward, unless you see it otherwise, Ladon. Uh, the, the goal I was trying to do was take as much of the case load off of the court staff as, as possible. And, and Ladon, uh, kind of explained to me that, that it doesn't really have that sort of impact on the case load. Um, is that accurate, Ladon?
Yeah, that's absolutely right. Uh, uh, Chief Meadows. So the solicitor is one thing. You still have your clerk. You still have your judge. You still have just the accessibility to prepare for court. So while it is true that these additional cases are primarily worked up by, um, uh, the third-party, uh, blue line that handles it, that doesn't take away from the phone call, researching cases and those things. And so, um, it kind of goes hand-in-hand with what I mentioned. As the police department grows or as the additional initiatives grow, you should have additional clerk staff to assist. For the cases that are school zone and potentially these truck route cases, those are mostly civil in nature. And so in those cases, just the judge appears on his own without the assistance, uh, of a solicitor because, uh, it's not really necessary for the process, the solicitor doesn't have any input. Uh, and as well as the police department does have the ability to send personnel of their own to attend those cases. So what I would say to answer your question, as you take on the next extra initiative, it may or may not require a solicitor, but it will require more staff to be able to handle those influxes of cases. Um, as you can see here, in twenty eighteen, we only processed forty-seven hundred cases. But so far, as I mentioned, for school zone, we're behind about twenty-four, twenty-five hundred cases. And that's not even for a full year. The school is out for part of the year. So that gives you an idea of how much clerical work is going into that type of thing.
Um, Chief Meadows, uh, uh, do we still, are you sending officers to court to handle these school, uh, enforcement cases? Cause I know there was a situation where some cases were adjudicated without accurate information because the officer was not present to, uh, defend why the, uh, the tickets were, uh, issued.
Yes, the officers are, are.
Okay. I haven't, I haven't attended a, uh, court since that incident. So I was just double checking. And then lastly, Ms. Sally Jones, who's responsible? Well, we have an interim solicitor. And so, uh, who's responsible? I know under the previous, um, the city attorney, Josh Belafonte, uh, did the hire for the solicitor when we, um, um, started as a city. So who's responsible for hiring a solicitor? I saw the court administrator role posted, so I know that you will, uh,
Mikey just brought it home and I just closed on my house. Guess who wants to move now?
Joy, who's that? Who's that? It's unmuted.
I don't know, but my question is to the.
All right, ahead, right ahead. Answer the question, Ms. Sally Jones.
Well, it would be the, uh, I would understand that it would be the appointment of the mayor and the council to do the solicitor appointment.
Hmm. Okay. Can we have our city attorney defer to the charter because, uh, I know we, we approved the contract, but, uh, I don't recall us making that appointment.
Why don't we do that?
Yeah. Okay. And we can do that because I was just based upon going up on the interim role you guys appointed, the interim solicitor. But I was not aware of what the procedure was for appointing, uh, Ms. Ladon Jones when she was the solicitor.
Yeah, it, I, it was the city attorney that hired. It was Josh Belafonte that hired the, uh, city solicitor. We had to confirm her contract.
Okay.
As, as I remember, but if you could defer that so we could, uh, make sure that, um, when Mayor Edward, um, becomes our mayor in twenty twenty-two, uh, we'll know how to proceed with that process. Thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, uh, Mayor Pro Tim. Uh, we now have, at the hour is five forty-one. Uh, we will, we will, we, we will stop this conversation with, uh, Councilwoman, Councilman Reed. Councilman Reed?
Yes, I just wanted to say, um, just to say, I, I want to thank Ladon for the work she had done with the court and for getting the, uh, procedures in place to, um, and getting our court back on track. And so I just wanted to say thank you for your service.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Reed. And let me add to that, uh, Ms. Blanket Jones, that you have done an outstanding job in helping us get to where we want to be. I'm excited about the kiosk. When you showed me that, that possibility. And I would challenge each one of us. I was up there today. Go upstairs. I watched court today from upstairs to get a closer understanding of what's going on. Ms., Ms. Blanket Jones, I know you're going to be leaving us. Let's make it clear. You're not leaving us for nothing that we did. So I want to hear how people are leaving us, you know, because of what we did. So thank you so much for your service and we appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, I am leaving, um, for, to be mom and chief, but I have been an honor, an absolute honor. Um, it was my dream when helping to create the city to have an opportunity to help in some way for it to continue. Of course, is what I know. You all have given me every opportunity to participate in a meaningful way with the court, even with the trips and slips and blips that may not have been perfect. And I really appreciate that opportunity and that honor. Thank you, Ms. Sally Jones, as well for interacting with this position.
Thank you so much. Uh, it's now four, five forty-three. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Yes, sir. We had the monthly reports portion of the agenda. The first monthly report will be the finance monthly report by Rachel Benbury, interim finance director.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, it is my pleasure this afternoon to present to you the financials for the twenty twenty-one fiscal year as of August thirty-first. And, uh, the first slide, uh, bear with me. The first slide you have in front of you, uh, is the summary of revenues for the general fund. Um, you'll note that, uh, we are, uh, tracking ahead of anticipated levels in most of the revenue categories. Um, this is primarily attributable to T A V T, which is your ad valorem, a motor vehicle tax. Your franchise, uh, fees are ahead of schedule as well as your local option sales tax, um, and occupational tax revenue. In the charges for service line items specifically, that represents your traffic camera revenue, which is pacing above budgeted levels. Um, overall, we are reporting a hundred and six percent as of August thirty-first. Next slide, please. Here's the expenditure side of the general fund. You will see a line item for each department. Uh, as you know, we are below budgeted levels, uh, but this is due to, um, some personnel associated expenditures that need to be booked for fiscal year twenty-one, as well as transfers that are customarily booked at year end. Uh, so at this time, we are preparing for our audit and performing closing entries for the year. And so we'll see some of those things line up a little bit closer in the, in the September report. Um, it is worth noting here that one department is reporting an overage, but I can, um, uh, happily report that that is an incorrect allocation of a worker's comp expense. And it has been corrected since this report was generated. Uh, so we don't have any departments that are reflecting expenditures over budgeted levels. Next slide, please. Um, this slide, uh, we'll touch on some of your primary general fund revenues. Uh, this slide shows your tax collections for your year-to-date property taxes. Um, you'll note here that twenty twenty collections are just slightly below nineteen, eighteen and seventeen. Um, but, uh, that's actually to be expected. Um, still, a collection rate over ninety-eight percent is very healthy. So, um, we're, we're doing well in, in that arena. Next slide, please. Uh, this slide shows you the numerical as well as a chart view of the local option sales tax revenues. Um, you'll note we're tracking well and, uh, actually expect we'll, uh, close the year around twelve to fourteen percent over the prior year. Next slide. Uh, this slide's similar. It shows your transportation sploshed or special, uh, purpose local option sales tax. Um, as of August thirty-first, uh, we are also doing well here, although not as well as expected. We are still tracking above prior year. Uh, I anticipate we will close the year around thirteen to fifteen percent over prior year. Uh, this slide, uh, provides just another way to look at the year-to-date expenditures in the general fund. It's just a graphical view of what you saw in a table format earlier on slide.
I was just in the market. You have.
And, uh, this is just the, uh, year-to-date expenditures as compared to the budget. This slide reflects the, again, it's the general fund and it's our year-to-date expenditures by object classification. Uh, this shows us the ratio of personnel to operations as well as a comparison of, uh, those objects to the budgeted levels. Uh, and then here, uh, is a, a slide that represents all of our funds. So it, it is in summary, the general fund, we looked at in detail on previous slides as well as all the other, uh, funds of the city. Uh, and when they're, uh, budget to actual comparison. Uh, before we move to the next two slides, uh, it's worth noting finance is preparing a budget amendment. Um, and that will clean up some of the variances that you see. Uh, you'll note, um, T S P L O S revenue, for example, as I mentioned on the previous slide is, is below budgeted levels. We'll, we'll correct some of those things, you know, confiscated funds and, and all. Um, and, uh, as we, uh, do that final budget amendment for the year. Next slide. Uh, these last two slides are, uh, just some informational inform, uh, information about the cash balance on this slide. This is the cash balances for the city as of August thirty-first. And your next slide, uh, reports the confiscated, uh, assets. So you'll see the reflected balance of just over two hundred and forty-six thousand, as well as some additional inflows for the year. Uh, and we have not booked yet any, um, outflows. So, uh, at this time, I will leave the floor for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Benbury. It's now, uh, five forty-eight. I see Ms. Gilliard.
Um, I have a few questions. Um, the first one, and I'm going to do them one by one, if that's okay with you, Ms. Benbury. First one is that I looked at the July, uh, budget, the general fund and the August budget for the general fund. And I noted some changes in some of the line items. And I was wondering why the budget changed for those two months.
Sure, no problem. So the, uh, there are two types of budget changes. Uh, one is a budget amendment, which must go before mayor and council. Uh, the second type is a budget transfer. Um, there, uh, the budget transfer occurs between line items within a departmental budget. A budget amendment is for any reallocation or additional appropriation that takes place between departments. So the, the legal level of budgetary control for the city of South Fulton and most, most municipalities is the department level. So anything above that level or between those departments does require council approval. And then within the department, uh, for example, education, teaching and training and travel, those type of transfers would be done without going before council. So those are probably the changes.
Okay. Um, my next question is, um, I, I really noted that the motor vehicle revenue and, um, increased over two hundred percent. Oh, as there was another one that increased a lot as well. Um, why do you think, and I think it was for, uh, I just don't remember the category. Why do you think we got over, uh, way over a hundred percent in, um, revenue for those two, um?
Sure, um.
Charges for service. That's what it was. I'm sorry. Charges for service. That was the second.
Yes, and I can tell you that T A V T, you know, uh, we, it, that's a hard thing to budget, uh, without having set the original budget. It is a little bit difficult for me to, uh, explain the variance, except to say, you know, we have received more monies than was originally budgeted. Um, but with that being said, I will just say from experience, the, the T A V T is a difficult thing, um, to budget for because as you know, we are, uh, as you may know, we have moved away from what they call the birthday tax. And now you pay that T A V T at the time of purchasing a vehicle. Well, that can fluctuate, uh, significantly depending on economic factors, et cetera. So it's a little bit harder of a target to hit, um, than the, than the old birthday tax was. So that's probably part of, of the reason that that has, um, come in. They probably were being very conservative due to the pandemic. And, um, you know, and budgeted low and then, you know, actually those sales and, and for that we're, uh, that produced the T A V T revenue stream for us has, has surpassed our expectations. Uh, so that's certainly that one. And then, uh, regarding the charges for services line, that specifically is a traffic camera revenue. And I, I just, that's a new revenue stream. There really isn't historical trend to follow. So I imagine that was, um, you know, uh, an estimate that was placed in there based on the limited, uh, knowledge of what that would produce. So I would expect over the next, uh, several years and several budgets, we would certainly become more and more clear, uh, and accurate in that budgeting.
Yeah, that, that, um, the, uh, revenue as of August thirty-first was four point two million dollars. That was a lot of money and we only budgeted one point nine. So if that's traffic revenue from cameras.
Oh, no.
Is that what you're saying?
Uh, there is a lot more, uh, lot more revenue, uh, line items in the charges for services other than traffic camera revenue. But by far, traffic cam revenue is the largest and, um, uh, line item that has surpassed its budget level. And charges for services, you would also have, you know, parks and recreation fees. Um, any, uh, service, some, some, um, development fees, some things that are cert- like plan review and things that are services the city provides for a fee. All of those fall in that line item. So traffic camera is only a portion of that.
Okay. Okay. Bear with me. I got a couple more. Um, what is included in the debt service in a fund account? Fund transfer account?
Um, so what that represents, uh, in regards to the budget, it will include debt service payments for the transfers to U R A for their debt service as well as other transfers for like E nine one one, um, blighted properties, those other funds that are subsidized by the general fund. That's what's captured in that line item. To date, in the year-to-date expenditure column, uh, the only thing that's reflected there at this time is the debt service transfer. Um, that's that one point one million you see there. Uh, the other end of your transfers for E nine one one and all the others have not yet been booked.
Okay. And now what about, um, revenue over expenses? And it's showing that we, uh, that there is a deficit at the end of the month. So why is that? Is that accurate? at the end of the month. So why is that? Is that accurate?
Hmm, I, you mean in the on the budgeted column?
Yes, in the budgeted column.
Correct. That just means that the budgeted, yes, and adopted budget would have been the original budget. And then as time passed and you, the county mayor and council adopted amendments to the budget, that will, those do not have to be balanced. So you will at the end report a budgeted deficit or surplus, and that is the budgeted deficit.
And then lastly, there is a report that is the cash, we're getting cash balance reports, but really only a third of the balance sheet. So it would be a good idea to show us what our liabilities are and what our fund balance is when you're receiving the cash balance. Because that gives the whole picture.
Sure, I understand. And, you know, I'm certain, I'm certainly happy to revise the financial reports at the direction of mayor and council, and I'll definitely work with Ms. Sadler Jones to make sure that any requested revisions are incorporated.
Okay, well, thank you so very much.
No problem.
Before we go, it's now five thirty-eight. Let me ask a question. Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Is your is your report something that you need to do in public?
No, it is not.
Okay, Ms. Sadler Jones?
Yes, sir.
I know we have your report. I would like to know if the council would, and if it's if it's if we can, Mr. Clerk, if we remove Ms. Sadler Jones's report to our next meeting, which is at six o'clock. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, that's at the will of the mayor and council.
Could I get someone?
Oh, mayor, we do we just get, we just do a consensus because this is a work session?
Okay, yeah, 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 that'd be great. That'd be great.
I wanted to go over it.
Could I get a consensus vote on moving moving the manager's report to the six o'clock meeting?
Yes, sir.
Oh, to the six o'clock?
Yeah. I didn't get, I didn't get the council, I didn't get the comments, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, you said the six o'clock meeting?
The next meeting we have is.
Yeah, we don't have another meeting this this afternoon. This is the only meeting. The zoning public hearing was canceled because we had no zoning cases today.
But it was a publicized?
Yes, sir.
As not having a meeting?
Yes.
Okay, then we can go over. Is that correct? Since we're not having that meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, let's let's go ahead then. And I think we're right now is councilwoman Rau is in the queue.
I'm sorry, can I have a point of order? May I just ask a question?
We're waiting.
Is there not a CZIM that's scheduled? I I got an email about a CZIM that was scheduled for six o'clock today. And one of the cases was actually a property in District Six. When I asked Ms. Reed, our CDRA director about it, she said that that hearing would be moved to six o'clock in place of our zoning hearing because we had no zoning cases. So I just want to be clear if that is or is not happening, because I really would like to attend that CZIM for this property on Old National.
Mr. Khalid, the issue on the floor was, is there a meeting at six o'clock? The answer is no. The other issue was, was there a meeting sent out to the citizen that we were meeting at six o'clock? And the answer to that is no. And so based on those two things, I'm going to allow this meeting to go over a little bit so we can get to where we know where we need to be.
Mayor?
I'm sorry, there was there was an email to council from the CDRA director that we would be hearing CZIM cases at six o'clock, and there was also public notice of that meeting.
Point of order, mayor.
Just a minute, just a minute. I'm I'm gonna refer to the clerk. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, there is no publicized zoning public hearing this afternoon for the stated reason that there was no cases. The CZIM meeting is a staff meeting, public meeting that is held by the at the department level, but is not a mayor, council, city council official meeting.
Okay, I got the answer, thank you, from City Manager Jones, that that meeting has been moved to tomorrow at six P M. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. Let's move on to Ms. 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 Rau, go right ahead.
Yes, as it relates to, I kind of got off track from that. Ms. Bembry talked about the traffic revenue, and this question is really not specifically. It's really a question for Public Works. When will the guidelines for that traffic calming be made available? I guess I'm, I want to know, do you have a tentative date? If not, I would like the city manager to bring back to the council at our next meeting those guidelines as it relates to how those funds for traffic calming, the process, what that looks like.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is Public Works Director Antonio Valencia. With regards to the guidelines, we can provide that to you at the next council meeting if so desired. We have discussed on how to allocate the funds with our finance department as well as our city manager.
Yeah, I would like to make that request, Mayor Edwards, that at our next month's work session that they walk us through the process, because as you know, a number of communities have looked for a traffic calming solution.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, let's make sure we do that for our, as part of our agenda. Thank you so much, Ms. Rau. I don't see anyone else in the queue. Mr. Clerk, what's our next agenda item?
Next agenda item is the City Manager's Monthly Report by Tammy Sadler Jones, City Manager. She has a special presentation.
Thank you, mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. I had asked the clerk's office to put back on the screen the American Rescue Plan, the projected project plan. I was not going to go back through it. I just wanted to find out if the council has any questions about the proposed projects that we are recommending to you and the staff. We will be requesting council's approval for the proposed American Rescue Plan product projects at the October twenty-six regular council meeting. Staff, you know, we have been thoughtful and strategic in trying to put together a plan for you based upon the guidelines that have been given to us by the U.S. Treasury Department. Just a reminder to you, our allocation is eleven point three million. We've received one point six, and we are expected to receive the additional remaining of those funds in May of twenty twenty-two. I also wanted you to keep in mind, you know, that any of these expenses are those that have been incurred after March third of twenty twenty-one. And then the city has until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, to obligate the funds. And we have until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, to spend the funds. So with that said, I just wanted to open it up if you have any questions. And then I do have some other items to share with you under my report for this evening.
Okay, questions? Councilwoman Rau?
Yes, I was wondering, City Manager Jones, can you, for the benefit of the public, can you project that project list?
Pardon me?
Can you project the list for the eleven million?
Okay. Clerk's office, can you go through the list? That should be, I guess, slide number three, recommendations. That is our recommended items. They're under three categories. Community recovery, which is two point seven million. Infrastructure improvements, four million. And government operations services, four point five million, for a total of eleven point three. And again, we've only received to date five point six, and the remainder of those funds will come next year in May of next year. And then we can also add this information, of course, to our website if the public wants to review our recommendations. Also, what we may do is because, you know, community engagement is very important to us, so we may consider opening up a survey that we will run for a few weeks just to get some of the public's input on their recommendations for use of these funds. But again, all of those recommendations and usages have to be within the guidelines of the U.S. Treasury Office.
Okay. Ms. Rau, you finished? Okay.
Yes, I just, and I would ask that you at least put this slide up for the benefit of the public on the city's webpage.
Okay, yes, ma'am, we can do that.
Thank you, Ms. Rau. Councilmember Gilley?
I have a couple of questions or comments, City Manager.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm gonna start. I might not be in order because I took out some sheets and I clipped them together.
Okay.
I'm gonna go to the the small business allotment. I see that it is for two hundred and fifty thousand, which is to develop a commercial recovery plan. I really think that it needs more money than that. I don't know how much more. I'm just thinking that I don't have any data. You know more than I do about why you came up with the two fifty. I just want to bring that to your attention. I think that, and and it's based on how we started out in terms of the rental mortgage assistance plan. Unless there was a serious problem with us getting an external company, a nonprofit, to handle it, I think that we should go in that direction rather than to have a director over a department that really doesn't have anything to do with anything like this. I think that that would be much better and would give us some distance in terms of being over it ourselves.
Councilmember Gilley, can I respond to that? Basically, you know, the the staff persons that you see won't be necessarily the individuals. For example, for the small business, they won't be responsible for, I guess, administering the program. They would just be the point of contact for whatever entity we would be using to assist us, the same way that we did for the CARES Act money, when we used an entity to help us with rental and mortgage assistance and also for the small business grants.
And 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 I'm glad you clarified that. But I do know, especially from citizens who have contacted me about it, you know, are really, really struggling, and some of them are really upset. They're scared, you know, losing the possibility of losing your home or place to live, you know, brings a lot of stress, and it takes a lot of patience.
Absolutely.
You know, to talk with people, to help them out and to talk them through that. So so just just be mindful of that. That's going to be really, really, you know, a lot of compassion is necessary for that. Okay, so then it's the allotment for the districts.
Yes, ma'am.
A good idea if we if we would know what our limits are in terms of someone coming to us. For instance, and this is just a wild scenario, suppose somebody comes to us and says, you know, I have, I need three months of rent. I've applied to the program. I can prove that I have. You're out of money. Anything that the council can do for me? So that would be maybe something that might come up, but we need to know what our limits are in terms of what we can and cannot do.
Yes, ma'am. We will make sure that you all have that information. And what I would probably even recommend is if you do get those type of requests, that you run those, you know, past me and the staff so we can assist you in determining eligibility.
Right, exactly. I'm moving on because I'm trying to do this quickly.
Okay.
And I know that I have a few, I know. So everybody just be patient with me. I'm gonna try to get through this as quick as I can.
Dan, where's the clerk say?
Then the one, the one point of fifty million for the stormwater. I'm kind of confused because I don't know what the criteria is for maintenance and who's responsible. And was it when it was under Fulton County, what happened with it? I think they they kicked it to the side and tried to make the subdivisions be responsible for it. But I don't even know whether or not we, any of the storm drains, storm drains in the city have been cleaned out or not. So I'm, I really would like to know how that works. And then moving on to the one point seven million for the capital improvement plan for stormwater. So I'm assuming that we don't know where all the stormwater drains are, and that it seems like that might be a lot of money just to determine what that is. Moving on to, this is a real biggie here, and it is the broadband one. I want to make sure that the money, because this type of money for this specific need doesn't come through often, and I'm talking about broadband. There's no money elsewhere for that. There might be some grants out there, but as we both know, many of those grants are for rural communities, real rural communities, not rural areas that are within a city. So I really, really want to see that this program really defines who really, really needs broadband and who really, really will get it. Then there is the the food insecurity program. I think that, for instance, I have at least a hundred and fifty small businesses. We're giving one vendor two hundred and ten thousand dollars for a food insecurity program. This is just going to touch the surface. I think that if that money goes into a fund, into the small business fund, because there's more than one farmer in the entire city, and we use it to help people learn how to grow food rather than to give them a box, I think that that would go a long way to to really help the insecurity problem. So those are the questions and the comments. So I'm finished.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, may I speak? Hello, Mayor Edwards, are you there?
Sadler Jones, you had one comment to make. She made one last comment. Can you, did you want to respond to it, then I'll get to Mayor Procham.
Well, she has multiple ones. If you if you don't mind, I can talk to Ms. Gilley off-line to discuss these with her because of a few things, you know, I think I may need just need some clarification.
I think it's very appropriate. Who I have, Councilmember Gom, would you yield to Mayor Procham for a minute? Councilwoman Gom? Councilwoman Gom? Mayor Procham, I'll give you two minutes. Say what you got to say.
I just want to clarify the food insecurity because I've been working closely with Ms. Sadler Jones and Don Toms. The two hundred ten thousand dollars is not going to one vendor. There was a fair process, and there were at least five vendors who has been working with the city, submitted proposals to Ms. Sadler Jones. I've been in some of those meetings, and when talking about addressing food insecurity, now it's going to be take, this two hundred and ten thousand dollars will address food insecurity comprehensively. It will be working with the multiple two of vendors that is currently working with the city. Four to five of them that I know of, some are working in, work with Mark. Some are working in, work with Mark Baker. Several have worked with several council members. And it also is going to be inclusive of grow boxes and making sure that we support sustainability as far as making sure that we encourage people to grow food. So, and that was put out. So I'm not really sure how that was missed, but I just wanted to make sure that that is clarified.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Gomes?
Yeah, I apologize. I was trying to get my phone off of mute. My question to City Manager Jones is, for the community recovery, I don't see any type of assistance for, I guess, mortgage or rental. Is that, was that excluded? Or am I missing it through the presentation?
Yes, ma'am. We included mortgage and rental assistance. It is one point four million.
Okay. And one of the things that, I guess, what I've noticed when Fulton County, I guess, first rolled out their allocation, they ran out of funding. So is there, I guess, a plan or any type of, I guess, strategy to make sure that we don't kind of get in that same boat? Like, is there a number of applications that are set that you all are willing to take during that particular open season or open, I guess you can say, open enrollment for the program? And instead of people still applying and they're just holding for the funds? Have you all thought that through, that process through?
We haven't specifically gotten into the details, but yes, ma'am. I mean, the intent would be that we would, you know, accept applications as long as funding is available. And when it is not available, then that would be communicated to applicants. But we would make sure that we would encourage people to get their applications in within a specific timeframe. Because again, once the funds run out, you know, we won't, we may not have anything else available. But we do hope that, you know, that this program will be continued for years to come and that hopefully at some point the federal government will provide us some additional funding to provide assistance to our community.
Will we still be using kind of the same system? Or did the third party, I do understand it was a third party from last time, and will it be staff from the city of South Fulton that will actually be like the liaison?
Yeah, the staff will be the liaison. And then the, we won't use an entity to help us administer the program. And then, of course, you know, because we are using federal money, we will also be doing our own follow-up with those entities to make sure that they are using, you know, those funds wisely. We need to, you know, always do our own independent audits.
Okay. And my last question, will it be the same qualifications as before to qualify for those funds?
Very similar. But again, those, you know, we didn't want to go too head of ourselves. We just wanted to make sure that you all were okay with our recommendations. And then we will begin to get into the nitty gritty of the details. And then we'll make sure, you know, of course, that that is communicated to the full council. Because we're gonna need your help getting the word out.
Okay. And my last and final question is, once council has approved this plan or your recommendations, how long do you anticipate that these programs, especially the community recovery piece, will likely get started? Will it be the first of the year or?
I would think by the first of the year, we would have it ready. Again, we are very fortunate that we already have a similar program in place through the CARES Act funding. So I would think that this particular program would follow along with those guidelines. And of course, you know, people will have to provide us with documentation of their eligibility. And as long as they do that, I think that we should be able to kick this program off fairly quickly.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, I'm going to acknowledge Councilwoman Baker, and then I will acknowledge Mayor Pro Tim as I gave her a two-minute corner order type. So, and she will close out with Mayor Pro Tim Willis. Mr. Baker, you have the floor. Mr. Baker, can you hear us?
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you for acknowledging me. Thank you, City Manager Jones, for your presentation. I also wanted to just add, because of our last meeting, we conversed about the possibility of you bringing us together for, I guess, I don't know if it would be a work session or us coming back to revisit, I guess, equity amongst our authorities. I didn't, I didn't see, and I may have missed it. I know in our initial presentations, there was a small amount for the Development Authority, given that we were not included in this year's budget or the past three budgets. And our DDA has one fifty every year. And I was just wondering if that amount was still in this recommendation.
Yes, sir. Right now, we still have the sixty thousand for the Development Authority, but I am working with our city attorney's office. And we will be putting together the IGA for the Downtown Development Authority as well as making the recommended changes that we discussed at the last meeting. And if it is the will of this council for us to increase that amount, I absolutely have no issue with that. But we will, we were planning to have that ready for the council meeting in two weeks.
Right, I understand. I was just wondering because this was the allocation that was the only allocation that we spoke of anyway initially. And I just wanted to see if that was still in there. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Mayor Pro Tim, we'll close out with you because she has another portion of her presentation.
Yes, Ms. Sally Jones, you've been included on a couple of emails with a couple of council members. And I, we are, we have recommended that you get with a developmental authority, subject matter expert attorney to help us revamp the resolutions for the DDA and the Development Authority. And so I think a motion is gonna come back to hold both of the IGAs until we get all of the resolutions and everything completed so that we can make sure that we get, we just want to make sure everything is equitable. And we have both Development Authorities aligned with the best practices that most of the metro Atlanta Development Authorities have with the same government structure, city council manager government structure.
Okay.
The other thing is, Ms. Sally Jones, I know some of that, I'll talk with you offline. About, I'll just talk to you, for the sake of time, I'll talk to you offline. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. I appreciate that, Ms. Sally Jones. Do you have another part of your presentation?
Yes, sir. I just had a few more items. Bonuses for public safety officials and first responders. On September twenty-second, twenty-seventh, pardon me, two thousand and twenty-one, Governor Kemp announced a thousand dollar pay supplement for eligible sworn law enforcement officials and first responders in Georgia. As a government, we are responsible for applying for that grant and distributing the funds to eligible employees. We are waiting for the application to be posted. I did participate in a GMA session today, and they did have a staff person from the governor's office giving some details about how to apply an eligibility. And I just wanted this council to know that, you know, we are already, as soon as we heard about this, you know, through the assistance of Chief Chad Jones, we started pulling, you know, the team together to get all of the information that we need to submit for that particular grant. So I just wanted to make you aware that we are starting that process, and I will keep you posted as we continue to go through submitting that information. I did want to let you know that T-Sploß resurfacing, today we sent out an updated memo about the two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one T-Sploß resurfacing projects. I did ask that you take a look at that. We revised that schedule. It has milling and paving projects that has begun on October two thousand and twenty-one. That new date is now anticipated to end on or about February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two, with weather permitting. And Public Works is continuing to strategize and looking at, you know, our resurfacing projects and hopefully, hope to have those done under one year. But again, we will continue to keep you posted on that process. As a result of the last council meeting, the staff, we are in the process of obtaining our extension from the Department of Community Affairs in regards to our comp plan because definitely we don't want this to affect our local government or local qualifying status. And due to the size of our city and as a result of COVID environment, it is our desire that we continue to have community engagement from our residents before submitting the plan. I am in the process of working with the mayor's office and our state representatives to get with, hopefully, in contact with Commissioner Chris Nunn, who is over DCA, to request that extension. I wanted to remind the public, due to the upcoming holiday season, there will be only one council meeting scheduled for November and December. That council meeting on November and December, which is November the ninth and December the fourteenth, we will hold our work session at four P.M. The zoning hearing meeting will be at six P.M. And the regular council meeting will be at eight P.M. Again, those time changes are for November the ninth and for December the fourteenth. Also, I wanted to let the council know we are continuing to actively recruit for a permanent finance director. We have gotten the assistance of an executive search firm, and we are beginning to start the interview process. And it is our desire to hopefully have that position filled by next month. But we will continue to keep you informed of that process. Last but not least, I did want to recognize Police Chief Keith Meadows. He will be honored as a social justice champion at Ebony's Power One Hundred Awards. Chief Meadows is one of nine people who will receive the award when Ebony Power One Hundred returns on October the twenty-third. This event is planned in Los Angeles, California. And we are very proud and honored for Chief Meadows and this accomplishment and the work that he does here in the city of South Fulton. And also Chief Chad Jones, our fire chief. He was elected second vice president of the Georgia Association of Fire Chiefs. He had previously served as the third vice president. And he will oversee the organization's unification committee as well as its legislative process. So again, we're very proud of our two chiefs and of course, very proud of all of our City of South Fulton employees. So if there are any questions I can answer, I'll be glad to take those at this time.
Let me just add my thank you to both chiefs for an outstanding job. Nothing irks me more than someone saying anything negative about our police and our fire. The job that they do is unmatched than anything in this region. And it's just, it's not fitting for anybody to say anything bad about what we're doing and how we're doing. My hat's off to both of you for standing here, even listening to those kind of criticisms, yet you stay focused and you do your jobs and you do it at the maximum. Congratulations to both chiefs. We are proud and you deserve it. Hey, I see Ms. Khalid in the queue.
Hey, thank you so much. First, Madam City Manager Jones, thank you for applying for the extension. We had, there had been all this doom and gloom about what would happen if we didn't get the extension. Do you or the assistant city manager have any experience with extensions for comprehensive plan updates? And if so, could you just tell us about that and how it works?
Thank you. Councilmember Khalid, I have not. And I'll just be completely honest with you. I have not had to experience an extension. Mr. Toms, have you experienced an extension during your time?
Extensions not with a comp plan but with service delivery. And typically, once requested, you're here back within a very short period of time. And I was able to get an extension of over a year.
Okay. And what happened to whatever DCA funding that you had in that year during the extension?
It was suspended, meaning we were still eligible for all our grants during that time, that we were able to maintain our local status.
Okay, so you didn't lose any grants? You just weren't able to apply for new grants?
No, I was able to apply for new grants as well as keep the old ones. Once you're granted the extension, they will extend your local status. That's all, that's all part of the request.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you all. I don't see any more hands raised. Mr. Clerk, do you see anything?
No, sir.
Okay. Next item of the district committee. That's it. Next item?
Yes, the next item is executive session if needed.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
I third.
I fourth. I move to second for adjournment. Any discussion? Hearing non, let's vote.
Roll call vote to adjourn. Councilmember Raul.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomes.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Gilleyar.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Khalid.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
We adjourned at six thirty-one P.M. Thank you.
Thank you to everybody. Good evening.